Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the August 25th, 2021 Regular Meeting of the Board of Education. Could I ask everybody to stand for the Pledge Allegiance for this? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. I'd just like to point, in the case of an emergency, we have the two rear exits and the two side exits, and you can follow the hallway out to the outside of the building. Before we begin, I'd like to make everybody aware of the enrollment pages out on the table in the hallway, the amended P.A.R., and an addendum to the P.A.R. They're all out on the table outside, so if you'd like to go out there. I'd like to begin with, tonight, we will accept the resignation of our Superintendent Jun Chang. His last day with the district will be on May 11th, 2021. We would like to thank him for his service to the Rockville Center community and his service till the middle of May. We have already started the process of superintendent search, and will reach out to the community as the process moves along. I'd like to... Mr. Chang? Excuse me? Superintendent remarks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for your comments. It's been a pleasure to have served in Rockville Center over the past year, and I look forward to helping out in a continued transition in search of the next superintendent for Rockville Center, and I do wish all the best to the school community. In terms of what we've been working on, I know we had building tours all day today, and we've been going through the buildings to ensure that we are ready and open, ready to be open for the beginning of the 21-22 school year, and we're very excited to be able to welcome all our students back. Our goal is to be as normal as possible coming back into the schools. So, as everyone has read in my letters, we want to be back in schools with pre-COVID, pre-pandemic levels of schedules, as well as procedures, all clubs and activities ready to go in full effect. I also stated in that letter that it is my intent to be able to require masks, and we also wait to continue to hear from our governor in terms of whether or not that mandate will come down, and I'm sure the board is willing to listen to commentary as they come today. One of the things that we have been steadily focused on is going back to the idea of ensuring that the educational needs of our students are met, whether it's from our lowest-level learners all the way to our highest achievers, and that's going to be a strong focus as we move forward into the school year, and I know Dr. Samfino and Ms. Sonia Hood have been working extremely hard in terms of getting us ready and prepared for that, along with the principals, and we are extremely excited to be welcoming back our teachers who will make such an impact within our classrooms. If I may, Mr. President, I just want to make a comment about the P.A.R. real quick in terms of, you know, I had recommended a head coach and an assistant coach, and I still stand by those recommendations. However, I do know that the board has spoken in terms of the way that they voted, and as such, I do believe that the girls need a season to start, and therefore, we've recommended a coach for this evening for the board to vote on as well. But, once again, you know, regretfully, I'm deeply saddened that those recommendations were turned down. And then, to end with my remarks, one of the things that we always look forward to as we go into the transition is all the buildings, as they open, the new things that have happened, the new staff that have come in. We have a number of new staff members that have joined us who are ready to impact our students as we move into the next school year. We have a Director of Secondary Special Education, Michelle Vavona, who's joined us, who will be in charge of all secondary special education needs, as well as our Kelly Ramsey, who is the Director of School Counseling, who I believe will be a great addition that will service grades K all the way through 12. Additionally, we also have welcomed, obviously, Jeannie Love, who is now the Executive Director of Special Education and People Services. So, I welcome to the district, and I know there will be a great addition to achieving the goals of RBC. And those are all my comments, Mr. President.
Thank you, Soren Chang. We are moving on to opportunity for board members. Erica?
Sure. I'd like to start by thanking Mrs. Celebrerty and our building administrators for a fantastic day touring the district. It was so nice to officially meet everyone. It is evident that our custodial staff and grounds crew have put in a tremendous amount of work this summer. The buildings look beautiful. The new playgrounds are perfect, and I'm sure that they will bring a great deal of joy to the students. I would like to thank the district's clerical staff for all of their hard work and effort in helping to transition into the new school year. You are truly the district's unsung heroes. I was so happy to meet many members of the district's administrative team, as well as many of our teachers, who are spending one of the last few days of their summer vacation in their classrooms, preparing for our children's arrival next week. Your dedication to our children is impressive. I wish everyone a school year full of happiness, success, and growth. Thank you.
Such a long day, but a great day to see our buildings. We are in such a better position than we were last year. We couldn't even gather as a group to tour the buildings like we typically would, so it was really a pleasure to get to do that as a team. Would like to welcome Ms. Jeannie Love to the team. I'm really excited to have her on board. I know she's going to do great things for the children of Rockville Center, so it was nice spending the day with her as well. You will see, when your children return to school, what we saw today, which is that these buildings are, you know, in pristine condition and ready for your children to enter the doors. I was really impressed. Our maintenance and custodial staff, thank you very much for everything you've done, to our principals and our staff for all the hard work. What I kept reminding myself of while we were walking through was that we have accomplished so, so much with a zero-budget increase this year, and I think that that needs to be said because we've never been able to do that in the history of this district. Mr. Bartels knows better than I, but we have accomplished so very much in a year, and when you see the fruits of the labor of the district and what it provides to your kids, I think you'd be really pleased, like we were today. New technology, interactive TVs throughout the buildings, new playgrounds. It was nice to see the new space from Wilson would be using. Mr. Duffy called it part of his campus today. It was really exciting to see the kids of Wilson be able to enjoy a full art room space, a full music space, and a safe environment, just minutes, you know, just a couple of steps away from their door. So, I was so happy to see that. One of the things that kept coming up today also was the Ed Foundation and some of the things that they've provided to our children, so I would like to, again, say thank you to the Ed Foundation for everything that they've done. We've had some crazy news, obviously, this week, and it's been, I know, a trying time for everybody in the district, and I would like to just remind everybody that who makes up our district and what makes us successful does not rest on the shoulders of one individual or five individuals, but on the entire staff and the students and the community, and we all play a role in the success of this district, and I believe very strongly in this district. We are made up of the amazing teachers that we have. Our students are phenomenal. They accomplish amazing things coming out of Rockville Center schools, and while we might be going through change and have to navigate that, I really assure you that your students are in the best of hands in this district and that everybody plays a role, again, in making that success. So, I know personally, I will definitely take the news of Mr. Chang leaving very hard. Sorry to hear the news, but I also would like to give words of reassurance to our community that we have amazing people here that will continue to provide an amazing education for your students. I really do wish the kids and the teachers and all the parents wonderful opening of schools, and look forward to hearing about all the things that they're accomplishing. Thank you. On Monday, all of the board members were fortunate enough to attend the New Teacher Institute just to visit and say hello and introduce ourselves to our district's new teachers, and it was such a great reminder of the great work that we have coming up in our new school year. And then, today, the building tour, Mrs. Celebrerty organized it along with the clerical staff, and Ms. Flanagan, you did a phenomenal job as well, the custodial and ground staff in each building, I mean, it was just so impressive, and each principal greeting us and showing us around their buildings, and it was just such a reminder and such a fresh start. And we were lucky enough to start at the middle school this morning, right before the sixth grade orientation, and just that energy of kind of being there moments before those new students walked into that building. It was just such a great way to start the day. So, I wish everyone a happy, healthy, and safe school year. Thanks so much.
It's hard to go last because I have all the same sentiments. We went on the board tour today. Thank you so much to Mary Lou and to Sue and everyone who made it possible, including the cooler, very cold water she had in the back of her car since it was really hot today. The principals were wonderful and welcoming, and the buildings looked fantastic. There've been so many improvements, and having gone on the other board tours that we went on, it was really like watching HDTV School Makeover. You got to see the before and the after, and it was quite impressive. The staff did a wonderful job. I want to wish everyone a healthy and happy beginning of school. I look forward to being a part of this this year, and we've already begun the search for a new superintendent. We don't intend to let you down. We're hitting the ground running, and we will do this together. There's no "I" in team.
Thank you, everybody. I just, you know, we walked through all the buildings in the district today. Very impressive. Everything is clean and ready to go. Everybody seems very excited for the start of the school year, and we will try and be as pre-COVID as possible. I mean, there will be issues at lunchtime and how we will keep the kids away without masks, but that's where all our buildings are now. Most of the improvements have been done, and whatever hasn't been done, we'll continue a little bit into the beginning of the school year. We are... Mr. Chang has sent out a letter to the community about how we will open our schools. Those conditions will be, I guess, better known by what the governor says in the next week or so. We will be more than likely mandated with certain conditions in our school, and we will follow those mandates as the law, you know, insists we do. I'd like to, before the visitors come forward, I'd like to say, this is an opportunity, if you wanted to speak about masking or your concerns about how the school district is going, this is the time. We're here to listen to you. We're here to, you know, understand how the community feels about things, and we'll take that all in and put that all into consideration. So, at this point, I'd like to open the mic. When you come to the mic, please leave your, please give us your name and address.
Hello. I want to go first because I'm nervous. My name is Elizabeth Kavanaugh, and I live at 69 Raymond Street. Please pay close attention to this address as it will become quite relevant later in this discussion. My children attend Hewitt Elementary and will be in second grade and kindergarten in the fall, respectively. I know there are far more important issues that the board has to deal with this evening, and I feel ridiculous even having to bring this issue to the board in the midst of a global pandemic, but this seems to be my only recourse, as no one in the decision-making capacity is getting back to me to allow me to adequately discuss my request. In two phone conversations initiated by me with transportation, I was told my request, which I will get to in just a minute, was denied as it was determined I did not live far away enough from the school to be considered for transportation. I have received no response from administration from my emails dated August 13th, 19th, 22nd, and 25th. That's today. If I had not reached out to follow up, I don't know if I would have heard anything at all. But I digress. This is why I'm here. I live on a section of Raymond Street between Morris and Burtus Avenue. There is a bus stop on the corner of Morris Avenue. My small section of the block is the only section that doesn't get bussing to Hewitt. When I inquired as to why this is, I was told that I live .69 away from Hewitt and therefore do not qualify for bussing. Now, I was curious about this figure because according to any and all walking or driving directions I have researched, most notably Google Maps or Rand McNally, my house is eight to nine tenths of a mile to Hewitt via walking or driving. The distance threshold for bussing, for those who don't know, per the district website for Hewitt, is eight tenths of a mile. I did further research to find out why my house was coming up as .69 away from Hewitt. I understand now that a direct measurement, otherwise known as "as the crow flies," flying over houses and roads, is used to measure one's distance from the school. However, I don't fly to school. Like all humans, I drive or ambulate to get to places I need to go, and when I do, the distance it takes me to travel to Hewitt with my two little cherubs in tow is nine tenths of a mile. The district's distance measurement here seems unreasonable, given, as noted prior, by my objective travel standard, by any objective travel standard, the distance is nine tenths of a mile to travel to the school from our home while we are steps away from the Raymond and Morris bus stop. I would respectfully ask for you to reconsider the decision to deny my two children access to a bus literally steps away from their home due to an issue of semantics. Thank you to my fellow community members, too, and to the board for allowing me to present my request in light of all the difficult issues our community is facing right now. This may seem small, but it will make a world of difference to my family. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mrs. Kavanaugh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Someone's raising their hand.
I don't know that we can hear you or we're recording you, so that's why the mic is necessary.
I'm really uncomfortable with the mic. I think I'm extremely loud. I guess you need a little bit of our community?
What do we... Are we okay?
Can you stand back from the podium so the mic can pick some of it up a little better so that people...
I'm asking you something I'm uncomfortable with, but I'll...
You don't have to approach the podium. You can stay back, but it'll be a little bit better amplified if you just come a little bit closer so the board can hear and that people who do it from home can hear.
I don't like mics.
That's good. You can stay right there.
Okay. I don't like mics.
I hear you.
I'm Isis Barney. Yes, Isis. I live, I live at 46 Shell Bank. I'm on the other end of town. I'm actually here, which is difficult for me. I'm here because I don't agree with the mask mandate that you all are about to embark. You guys, obviously, seem very intelligent. I have no doubts that you have the ability to weigh this out in your head. I have no doubts that you see what it does to wear a mask. I also understand fear. This is fear when we put on a mask because it says right on the box that it doesn't prevent an infection to go or come in. It says it right on those blue, pretty little masks that we're all wearing. And the other ones, the cloth ones that have these beautiful things on them, they, too, do absolutely zero. There is a lot of science behind that. I'm happy to bring paperwork next time. I didn't do it this time, so I'm trying not to be aggressive. But I think that my son, who has been vaccinated, doesn't need to wear a mask. He is fully vaccinated because he chose to. Gave him the choice when he turned 16. He asked me, "I don't want to wear a mask." They told me I don't have to wear one if I get the vaccination, so he got it. Now, you're telling him he has to wear one? Where's the science in that? I really need you to redigest this whole thing. I need you to focus more on what it means and what you're asking. I think that we are all smart enough to understand how to take care of oneself, hygiene, coughing. I've worked as a special ed teacher. You know what that's involved? I know how to wash my hands. So does my teacher, so does every teacher I know. So do the students. We know how to cover our faces. We know how to do this. I keep germa soap with me. Yes, I am one of the ones that use germa soap because I do believe it does cut down. It shows, in the science, it does, but these masks don't. All it does is prevents us from seeing who we are, and it prevents our children from showing who they are. I already had one who graduated during the height of this. Everything was stolen from him that year, and I know someone else on the board has also had that. I'm saddened by that. It's nobody's fault, but he'll never get those again. My son will never have these years again. So, I'm asking you, please educate yourselves. You are very smart people, smarter than I am. I'm not the brightest bulb in the shed, but I'm asking you, I'm begging you, please read more. I've read extensively on this. There's more than one voice out there when it comes to medical professionals who know these things. We must listen to more than one voice. I beg of you for the students. If other ones want to wear it, the parents want their children to wear it, by all means, please allow them. That's their choice, just like it's my son's choice not to wear it. I don't know what's going to happen to him his first day, but he already said, "Mom, I will stand for myself. I will not put it on." I hope to God I don't have to come here, but I will. I'm married to a retired police officer. I know what's involved, and I'm telling you, I will come and I will stand with him. He doesn't have to wear one. He does nothing to anyone, and he's not in any danger. I like my children to play, and I like them to be a part of life, as I want all his friends to be a part of their lives. I thank you for listening. I hope you can redigest all this, and I'm hoping you give this all an opportunity to do better because I know we can do better because isn't that what learning is about? To do better? I thank you for your time, and I thank you for not making me stand there.
Thank you, Mrs. Barney. If you'd like, if you'd like, you could send the information you wanted to bring next meeting to boe@rvcschools.org, and then we would get that and could read that. Thank you.
Hi, Alexis Volpe, 625 Hempstead Avenue. I wasn't planning to speak tonight, but I figured since there has been no more comments that I would just stand up and speak off the cuff. It is nice to see so many people in attendance tonight. I've been watching the live streams for the past year, and this is a nice turnout tonight. I wanted to just request that there be more community involvement and dialogue in the decisions that are made by the board. I feel like many of us have sent emails over the summer since last spring and have gotten no response. The woman before me who spoke about the bussing and the numerous requests that she has made over email to getting no reply is a testament to the fact that there is no two-way dialogue between the Board of Education and the community, and I think the community desperately wants to be involved. Another example I'll bring up is the reopening committee. Now, I'm not sure if this was public knowledge of who was on the reopening committee, and I might be incorrect, but I believe the names of the people on the website are actually from last school season, not this school season, and neighboring school districts have sent out surveys to parents, have included them in the reopening plans, but Rockville Center, to my knowledge, was not included in any reopening plans for this year, and I believe that's why there's probably such a large turnout tonight is because we are asking for more involvement, whether it's masks or no masks. That's not the concern that I have. It's more the concern of just being involved in the conversation. Mr. Chang, I know that you were intending to have more fireside, fieldside chats, what have you, with the community, which I think was a welcome addition. Sorry to hear that you are departing, but I ask that whoever steps in in the interim or, you know, somebody else on the board can resume the idea of having these fireside chats, fieldside chats, would, again, be very welcome. I think it's somewhat difficult to have a conversation standing up at a microphone, you know, where it's most a request versus a two-way dialogue. So, you know, that is what my request is, just to have an opportunity for two-way dialogue. And a side note, just want to thank you for removing the plastic barriers in school. I think this is a big step in the right direction, and I think the children will greatly appreciate it and it will help with their learning, so thank you.
Thank you.
Marlene McConie, 55, Andover Road. Thank you, as always, for your service to the community, and thank you for this opportunity to provide insight into protocols for the upcoming school year. The series of questions that I do have is with respect to the protocols and the role of our district RN and Medical Director. Excuse me. First, it's my understanding, based upon the Board of Ed meeting minutes, that the district nurse practitioner is on an extended leave and that Bosse's was hired by the district as medical director at a cost of $21,000. My first question, is Bosse's charged with the implementation and execution of pandemic and quarantine-related procedures? If so, while I understand that we do continue to wait for universal state guidance, given the likelihood of the subjective nature of that guidance, will Bosse's be providing a letter to parents as to COVID protocols and quarantine procedures, and will that be done before the commencement of the school year on September 1st? Secondly, when do you expect to make a determination if the district nurse practitioner will be retained or replaced? When the nurse is retained or replaced, will Bosse's cease to act on behalf of the district? If so, and this is another financial question, will the $21,000 paid to Bosse's by the district be prorated based on the months of service and the balance returned to the district? And finally, if the nurse practitioner is retained, will she be in charge and entrusted with the implementation of COVID and quarantine protocols? Or will you retain Bosse's to handle those issues, given all that arose last year? And in that same respect, as a more general matter, who will be entrusted and charged with day-to-day operations and oversight? Who will step in during this period of time to take on the position as high school nurse? I think as parents, as members of the community, you can all understand that many of us want clarity on these important issues. Thank you, and, you know, I'll stay at the podium. I know that was a lot of questions, so thank you.
Thank you.
I can answer some of the easier ones. I'm not going to get into any details in terms of personnel. In terms of, our intent was to get a medical directorship through to Bosse, so they will be with us for the remainder of the balance of the year. That's what they were approved for on the reorganization. Additionally, yes, we will be consulting with them directly. All COVID-related activities, as well as functionality and discussion, will go through the executive director's office.
Who will be entrusted with making the day-to-day decisions at the, you know, district level, since I anticipate that Bosse's representative will probably not be present?
All of those activities will go through the executive director's office.
And the executive director is...
She's actually sitting right in front of Jeannie.
Okay. I'm sorry. This is the first, I don't know if you made a public announcement or, this is the first that I'm hearing of it. And in terms of the day-to-day responsibilities, I know that some parents are trying to figure out, for example, where to send medical forms. You know, I don't have a high school child, but I'm speaking on behalf of many ex-members who do. They were wondering who's going to be, you know, in charge of the day-to-day operations, head nurse at the high school level.
We'll certainly have a nurse. We currently do have a nurse in there right now.
I, you know, thank you for these answers, and before I leave the podium, I'd just like to say that I think it might make sense for the entire community, instead of having, you know, speculation and conjecture, all of us asking so many questions, trying to find out answers on social media, if perhaps the district would try to update our families on, you know, a more continuous basis. I think that that would alleviate a lot of our concerns, and while we, most of us will have questions, you know, again, more than anything, I think we are concerned about the specific protocol to Rockville Center School District. Will we be receiving any supplemental details before school starts? You know, I don't know right now, for example, my kids don't have COVID, but if one of them were to test positive, I don't have the protocol right now. Who would I contact? Where would those inquiries go? Where would I be getting answers from? You know, is this person going to be contacting the school principals? Those answers are just... Those answers are just not to be found anywhere.
I would say we haven't deviated much from the way we closed out schools and our FAQs kind of stayed. We are planning to update them. We, I know today, we just, Mrs. Love also had a great conversation with the Department of Health. They're also waiting on any clarity that may come, but this, some of the FAQs will be updated very shortly and they'll be updated and we've been pushing those FAQs out regularly. It's just, you know, we're in, once we get those updates, we'll make sure that we get those out.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Frank Van Sant, 76 Tannard Lane in Huntington, New York. I'm the president of the Rockville Center Teachers Association. I'm an optimist, but I have to tell the board that my teachers have feelings of foreboding. It's no secret where the association stands when our two most capable applicants are turned away from their coaching appointments despite their awards, despite their achievements, despite being in full compliance with all board policies. This is not the only mystery decision that's discouraging to teachers. It was just referenced a moment ago. What's next? This is a great town. It's a must-move-to town. It's a town of generations. I've seen many of the generations myself, but how has this summer gone? It's been given over to anxiety. It's been given over to fighting. It's been given over to private vendettas played out in public. It's been given over to distrust. It's been given over to ignored professionals. It's been given over to the loss of educational leadership and investment in a person who, time and effort and money, unfortunately, didn't work out. You couldn't work with this person and now we have uncertainty. A few weeks ago, a parade of youngsters, impressive youngsters, gave their best reasoned logic. They gave their heartfelt thoughts about what they hoped would happen to their benefit and it's as if the board didn't want to listen. It's as if the board didn't care. This is a great town, but these days, who do we look more like? The Say asset that we want to be or the Lawrence that we could be? We're at a crossroads and this board needs to make decisions wisely. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, everyone. Can I have a motion to accept the minutes as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I have a motion to approve the financial reports as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I have a motion to approve the receipt of financial reports as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I have a move to accept board actions? Mary Lou, are we going to, I'm sorry, are we going to pull off 17, just go through it the way we usually do? Antonia?
Do we have to, do we have to do a roll call for the acceptance of the superintendent's resignation?
So we don't have to. John Kinderven furthered it in. Okay. So, board actions, one through 18?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions?
I just had a question about where are all the obsolete instruments going to go?
They'll be disposed of. If any of them have any value, we would try to sell them. If not, then they would just be thrown in the garbage, really.
What happens to the computers and the keyboards and all that? Are they all in such disrepair that we're getting rid of them, Robert?
Would be the same with any obsolete equipment that we have. We always look to sell it if it has any value. We would donate it also if somebody has the need for it or we'd throw it out. But yeah, typically at this point when it's obsolete, it's of no value.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I have a motion to approve the amended P A R?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions?
Are you doing the addendum separately?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I have a motion to approve addendum one to the P A R?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. O'Shea, I'd like to abstain, please. I was hoping to revisit the original P A R. That's where I put my vote. I'm standing by my vote for our current teacher-coaches. So I'm going to abstain.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.